I'll call the Menifee City Council to order. And Madam Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember August. Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
And I understand you'll chair the meeting tonight as the mayor is absent tonight.
Fine. Thank you so much. And it looks like words of inspiration to Reverend Stephen Van Meter for the Center of Spiritual Living, Sun City. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Take a second and center ourselves. Thank you for the opportunity to be here to address you and to speak these words of wisdom. This is something that was adapted by My Prayer for My Country by Ernest Holmes. Believing in the divine destiny of the city of Menifee, California, and its citizens and the city council members, and believing in the preservation of liberty, security, and self-expression, I offer this, my words of wisdom. Councilmembers and its citizens, I know that divine intelligence governs the destiny of Menifee, directing the thought and the activity of its leaders, citizens, and specifically those who guide its affairs. I know that success, prosperity, and happiness are the gifts of freedom and are the divine heritage of everyone in Menifee and are right now operating in the affairs of each and every leader and individual at this meeting this evening. I know that divine guidance enlightens the collective mind of the leaders and people of Menifee, causing its citizens to know that economic security comes to all without the loss of either personal freedom or loss of any individual's self-expression. I choose to believe that our freedom shall not be surrendered in order to ensure economic security. I choose to believe that the all-knowing mind of God, Christ consciousness, or whatever you personally choose to believe that animates our being, contains within it the answers to every situation that may confront us. I know that every leader and citizen of Menifee in this great country of ours is dedicated to this all-knowing mind and has the knowledge of the complete solution to every challenge, any situation, that each leader and citizen is compelled to act upon this knowledge with wisdom, to the end that abundance, security, and peace shall come to all. I know that this spiritual democracy shall endure guaranteeing everyone personal liberty, happiness, and self-expression. And so it is. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you would please follow me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country, please put your right hand over your heart and follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Madam Clerk, what is our next order of business?
This evening, Your Honor, we would ask that you would consider a minor modification of the order of your agenda, no changes to the items, but if you would be able to bring forward our consent agenda at this time so that we could get the contract voted for our new attorney. And then we do, alternatively, we do have a speaker on that consent agenda, so if it's okay with you to move it forward.
As you order.
All righty. I will call the speaker, Mr. Grant Yoderz.
Good evening, Grant Yoderz, community of Sun City. In view of the fact that you folks are going to approve the agreement with the, for the new city attorney, I just thought it would be interesting to let the folks know exactly what the rates are going to be for compensation for these folks, because I sincerely doubt that you'll identify that as part of your meeting. The retainer for the city attorney for the first 60 hours will be $195 an hour. For all services over 60 hours per month will be $205, and for special services, including litigation, will be $230. I would just like that to be, be sure that it's on the DVD so that people will be able to see that. In view of the fact that you folks continue to ignore my plea to have the warrant register figures put on the agenda, I just want the public again to know that you're going to approve $3,500,000 tonight without a single question or challenge. The most glaring expense, of course, is $860,000 for the June Tum fees, $1,250,000 for the sheriff's contract. The legal fees continue to be somewhat modest this time, it's only $13,700, and maybe with the new attorney, we might not have all these frivolous expense, legal expenses aimed towards Tom Furman and harassment that continually taken place by you folks on the city council. And lastly, has to do with the approval of the monthly treasurer's report. At no time within the last six years have I ever heard you folks ask for a report from the financial director just to let us know what the financial posture of the city is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Katie Manier. At the last meeting, Mayor Mann thanked Julie Biggs for her community service. I just wanted on the record, she performed no community service. She had a job with the city. She was handsomely paid. Community service is something you do for the goodness of your community because you want it to be a better place. She was paid for every single thing she did and overpaid in a lot of instances, making backdoor deals. That's all. Thanks.
Those are all of the comments for the consent agenda, Your Honor?
All right.
It would be appropriate to have a motion on the consent agenda unless something is pulled.
Do we have a motion on the floor for the consent? Do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. No objections? So ordered.
I have to do a roll call vote on that, sir. Sorry, money.
All right. Go ahead. That's right.
All righty. Councilmember August. Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, we have a new city attorney. Mr. Melching, you're going to take the seat. And welcome to Menifee, sir. And we're happy to have you. Just, I don't know if any other of the...
I'll make a comment on that as well when I get an opportunity.
Okay. I don't see any green lights here, but I'm...
You can have them now.
No. There we go. Okay. I was just going to say, and then I'll get right to you, Mr. August, that we're really pleased to have Mr. Melching here. Rutan and Tucker are one of the most prestigious law firms that you could find in the Southland, and we feel very privileged to have him representing us. As far as rates are concerned and expenses and that kind of thing, that's an interpretive matter, because you can have, for example, one city attorney charging a lower rate than another one, and the one charging a higher rate could literally end up being less expensive because they might be more efficient, they might be more effective, they might not be as inclined to get involved in certain circumstances as another city attorney. So that's, that's an interpretive kind of thing. But in any event, Mr. Melching, we're really pleased to have you here tonight. Councilman August.
Well, I'm going to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Melching for being here tonight. And I want to make a brief statement to the public and to you, kind of a welcoming thing to you. I want the public and I want Mr. Melching to know tonight that my vote in bringing you aboard represents what I think is best for the city at this time, in our history, and under all the circumstances pertinent. I think all the attorneys that Mr. Edgerton and I interviewed, and that includes a very good one and friend of everyone on the council, Julie Biggs, are, of all, Julie Biggs were highly qualified and more than able to meet the needs of our city. I believe, Mr. Melching, when asked the question, why would someone with your credentials and quality of work want to come to the city of Menifee? And I believe your answer was something like, it fits where I want to be in my life right now. My decision in selecting you is because I think you were, in my opinion, the best fit for where we are in the city of Menifee now. Thank you and welcome aboard.
Did you want to make any comment, Mr. Melching? Or you don't have to.
Just, just very briefly, I wanted to thank the council for the process that you went through, for the opportunity to interview with you. And I wanted to tell the community how unbelievably excited I am about the opportunity to be the city attorney in Menifee. It is a city of such great opportunity and great diversity, and looking at it as truly an outsider until I got engaged in this process, I, all I saw was promise and opportunity. And I'm really looking forward to having the opportunity to work with you. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir. All right, then, we are finished with the consent calendar. We'll go back to the regular calendar. I believe, what, we're at presentations, Madam Clerk?
That is correct, Your Honor. We are at presentations.
And then let me ask the city manager, do you have any comments in reference to this before we proceed?
No. I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of council, and hand it off to Robert Lennox, your community services director, who will have the balance of the item for you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and members of council. It's my pleasure this evening to present this item, and it's the consideration of appointments to the city of Menifee's first-ever youth advisory committee. With that, I'll give you a quick background reminder that on April 2, 2014, the city council adopted Resolution Number 14-361, which established the youth advisory committee. In that process, the committee's purpose was to essentially advise the city council, provide empowerment for youth, and create opportunities for the youth's input into community projects, programs, and events, and provide a vehicle by which youth can become involved in a process which enables them to be an influence and impact on issues and decisions they care about in their community. With that, staff did post notice of vacancy for the committee, and 14 applications were received. As a result, staff conducted interviews, group interviews, on Friday, September 5, to evaluate leadership and public service skills of the youth. And as a result, staff and the community evaluators are recommending the appointment of 11 of those applicants, as well as also recommending two alternate positions should any of the formal appointments not be able to finish their term during mid-year. I'm going to go ahead and call the names of those that are being recommended, and then at the end of that, turn it back over to council for a vote. First, Abigail Huz, Alexandra Silva, Angelica Austin, Carla Monroy, Madison Boker, Matthew Stacy, Michaelia Whitner, River Michael Ricatto, Tabitha Tissant, Teresa Austin, and Zonke Frazier. Those are the 11 appointees that are being recommended by the committee and staff for appointment. The two alternates are Dylan Morris and Jennifer Pekerek. And so I go ahead and, that concludes my report. I'll turn it back over to council for consideration.
All right, sir. Thank you, Mr. Lennox. Then this... Well, I don't know, that might be premature. We got, the council has to approve you now first. But this is a big deal, and we are very, very proud of you, assuming you get appointed. And let's see if you get appointed. Let's find out if we have any motions of approval on this council or any comments from the council.
Motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve? We have a motion and we have a second. Congratulations, young people. We are so proud that you're going to serve our community. This is, this, this is a big deal for our community, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lennox. I think, do we want to come down in front and...
Yeah, absolutely. Being the very first committee, youth advisory committee for the city of Menifee, I think this is a, worthy of some sort of ceremony and recognition, and certainly would like all of the no-longer candidates but actual appointees and alternates to come up front in front of the dais for a photo op with the council members. And while they're coming up, just to reflect a little bit on the process, this group of students are phenomenal. The quality of thought and ability to engage in issues that are important to youth in this community were unparalleled. I, obviously, I worked in other agencies and had several other youth committees, and this group really stood, stood out. So I think you've got a great group of kids here, so.
Mr. Lennox, thank you. So let's go up and take a photo.
Deputy Mayor, I'm going to note that you got a voice vote, a four yes votes on that. Is that, is that the case?
That's fair enough.
Thank you.
Yes. In fact, for, for a photo op, I'm going to suggest... Do you, yeah, why don't we get these people closer in? And we'll all squeeze in over here with councilmen. If you'll close in here. Beautiful group. Very photo, Mr. Lennox, why don't you come over here and, and take the mic? This is...
Yes, Robert. You should take the mic. You come over here.
Yeah. The reason I'm handing the mic to Robert Lennox is this group of fine people, they're your responsibility, we're counting on you, Mr. Lennox.
They are going to, they're going to keep me and this city accountable for those issues related to youth, and I think it's a great, great group of kids that we've got here. Not so much kids, but young adults. They've got the skills already. We just want to harness that energy and put it toward some great community service projects this year.
Thank you. You're taking, taking a few pictures here. Okay. I think we're done. Congratulations.
Committee members, I mentioned it before the meeting started, but please take an agenda from the back of the room home. You may not care, your parents will take it home so they have it for your scrapbook.
A quick note for committee members, before you, before you leave city hall this evening, if you could meet out in the lobby. We do need to set a date for the first meeting before the end of this month. So Margarita will meet you out in the lobby. Thank you.
Yeah, this is important, because for those of us over 40, we're, we're planning on you young people taking care of us.
That's right. Forty hours a week on that committee now.
Okay. We'll wait for Mr. Lennox to get his classroom moved. Thank you, Robert. Job well done. Okay, approval of minutes, I believe, Madam Clerk? Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second. Hearing no objections, so moved. And I'm a little rusty now, Madam Clerk, so just let me know when I should be having a roll call vote, please.
No problem, sir. You know I will.
Okay. Agenda approval or modification?
Sir, tonight, we're going to ask, when you reach items 11.1 and 11.2, we're going to request a motion of continuance to a date certain, that being October 1, 2014. Both applicants in this case have requested that there's emails from them in your red folder, and for various reasons, they were, they're hoping to not hold this tonight. So the question now is, if any of you came here to speak, but I'm assuming you didn't because I have no speaker slips, to that, you would only be speaking as a public comment, not as a public testimony. That would then come on October 1. So you're certainly welcome to speak as a public comment on those items, but you might prefer to hold your comment till the actual public hearing on October 1.
So moved.
I'll actually ask for a motion on each item as we get to it.
All right. Did you want to take those items now, Madam Clerk?
No, we can do it in order, sir.
Okay, fine. In other words, we'll be taking public comments first prior to...
We'll be taking public comments now of the regular sort.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So we're ready for public comments now?
We are, sir. Chuck Ruder.
My name is Chuck Ruder. Honorable mayor, honorable city council, honorable city staff, and honorable people. I'm trying to get people to think about running for office over and over again. And they don't follow through because they do not want to put their family through the mud, through the slinging going on, through the viciousness going on. Vicious! There was a flyer that Mayor Mann answered. Once again, the same type of thing that goes out and discourages people from seeking public office, looking at something like that. I'm not sure what's going on, but I'm concerned because of what happened in 1933 Germany. People gave up. Why should I bother? They got some people in there who took the country down a very bad path. What I'm trying to say is, the type of ad that Mayor Mann responded to is the number one reason people do not want to run for public office. Number one. Nobody has apologized for it. Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
I am speaking tonight on Mayor Mann because I received a phone call from your opponent in, from his opponent in the mayor's race. He told me he had a phone call with Doug Spooner, 24/7, in the mayor. Per Mr. Wiggins, Mayor Mann said that negative flyers about him were being distributed to the public and he thought it might be me. Mr. Wiggins informed the mayor he knew nothing about any flyers, but Scott Mann, not satisfied with that answer, decided with the aid of Doug Spoon, did a smear campaign article on 24/7, denouncing his opponent and demanding Wiggins write an article on 24/7 condemning the author of the flyers. What a hypocrite you are, Mr. Mayor. You paid for 2,000 copies of negative flyers on Darcy Coonsy and Sue Christensen at the Staples in Menifee and hand-delivered them to me at my home for delivery to the community when you were running for the mayor position in 2012. I still have the two boxes from Staples with your name on it and the same flyers. Plus the fact, my daughter and son were witnesses to your delivery of said flyers. It was okay for you to deliver negative flyers on your opponent in the mayor's race in 2012, but when the table is turned, you can't take it and you cry foul. I have seen those flyers and everything on them is true. And if they appear negative to the public, you only have yourself to blame. All record, all recorded votes made by you can be verified through public records. You voted for a bond to build low, low-income housing, voted to put a lot, at large, on the ballot in an attempt to overthrow the 2010 vote for districts. Your campaign money is funded by developers. Were fined $1,500 by the FPPC. Refused to sign the city council pledge not to accept money from developers. You did request a 1,200 pay increase per year for yourself, and there is a police report that you threatened me. I have that card from the Deputy McGlauren with badge and case number. You're running for reelection, Mr. Mayor, and the public needs to know how you voted and what you have done or not done as mayor for the last two years. You're lying to the public regarding the crime report issued by the sheriff's department for Menifee. It was printed on Menifee 24/7 in the press enterprise. The crime rate for violent crime was up 200% in 2013, just like it says on those flyers. And you want to raise, we don't have money to put more cops on the street. It's just disgraceful how self-serving you are. Don't waste my time trying to rebuttal what I have said, as I have no intention of sitting here and be bullied or reprimanded for speaking the truth on how corrupt the mayor is when it comes to campaigning. This council needs to investigate the mayor and sanction him.
Ms. Pika, I'm going to make a comment, and I'm not going to get in a discussion with you. I'm inclined to be sympathetic to what Mr. Ruder just said, but I'm not saying you've done anything wrong, but you, I believe, have crossed a line, and I'm not saying what you, the line that you crossed is wrong, but, and I'm not an attorney, but I'm going to advise you, and I'm going to ask our city attorney if I'm correct or not, and I believe I am, because it's a subject I've taught for a lot of years. As you know, a lot of people come to the mic and make accusations, and they can call people corrupt, they can say anything they want as a rule, because they, that's their state of mind. And under the Constitution and the First Amendment, we have the right to say what we want. But there are some, certain lines we can't cross. You can't commit libel, and you can't commit slander against a private person. If you do, they can sue you, and you have to prove it. The problem for public officials, whether it be an athlete, an actor, or an elected official, is that under the Constitution and under the First Amendment, you have a presumption of innocence. There is an assumption of an absence of malice, because that's your interpretation. So you can come up here and, a number of people can come up here and say we're corrupt, or you can say that developers are involved, so we're beholding to them or we're in cahoots with them. And that's your interpretation. But I'll ask Mr. Melching, because I think tonight you've done something different. What you've done is you've made allegations that a public official or a public person, he was a candidate at the time, has actually broken the law, has made serious violations of the Fair Political Practices Commission. And I would suggest to you that, at this point, the onus is on you to demonstrate that the information you have and the evidence you have would bring a reasonable person to your particular conclusion. Because I'm going to speculate that after this evening, either the mayor may be in a lot of trouble, or you may be in a lot of trouble, particularly if he loses the campaign. It's a complex issue. Because Mr. Ruder just started discussing some things. If what your allegations are, are true and are confirmed to be true, we had two council women who lost their campaign. They can now claim that they are injured parties, and they don't have to claim that those flyers caused their loss. All they have to do is demonstrate that it was contributory to their loss. And now you've made the mayor libel, assuming that your allegations can be confirmed to be true.
They can.
So before, if you're going to make that amount of the public record, you have an opportunity tonight to say, well, I think I want to think that over, because I, I want to be sure that my evidence is supportive of me for a reasonable person, so I don't get into trouble. And I just asked Mr. Melching, am I somewhere in bounds, Mr. Melching, in reference to what I'm saying to this lady?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I, I want to begin by emphasizing something, and that is that the statements made by a member of a public in a public meeting may have some relationship to liability issues for that member of the public, but it is not a city of Menifee issue. It is, it is an issue with regard to a communication by a member of a public, and if there is a right that accrues on account of those statements in favor of a candidate or an existing city council person, that is a private matter. It is not a City of Menifee matter. That being said, you did reference certain First Amendment-based causes of action. Certainly, everybody has a right to come into a public forum and speak their mind. However, if they speak falsely in a public forum, there are issues associated with libel and slander. Those are complicated doctrines of law. I don't think it would be my role or appropriate for me to be giving advice about those doctrines of law, even if it were, I mean, in an open session of a city council meeting is not the appropriate place to be providing that advice from the dais, and certainly not to, not to a person that is not my client. So with that, I'd like to leave it there. I do want to say that you accurately described the various causes of action that exist, and the fact that truth is a defense, and that you need to tread, tread, tread carefully with statements that could be construed as false.
Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you, but I do have proof, so I'm not too concerned. Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker, please.
Frank Taylor. And in front of you, you do have a piece of paper he distributed for your view as
Is that our new council plane?
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and members of the council, Mr. City Manager. My name's Frank Taylor, and I reside in the city of Palm Desert. This is a request for a study session or a presentation at a future date regarding a conceptual program where we're going to, which many in the past have called drones, but we promote as small unmanned aerial systems. There's no funding being requested, and I've provided a copy of this request to the city clerk for, for you to look at. I retired as a captain with the Sheriff's Department in 2012 after almost 29 years of service to local communities in Riverside County. I run a local company, Community Safety Consulting Group, which includes pilots, retired public safety members, and several consultants. Our group is currently working and volunteering our time locally to help public agencies look at the viability of unmanned aerial systems within their communities. We have been taking a new approach to educate the public, the media, and the stakeholders first. Local agencies have become interested in unmanned aerial system technology to supplement their operations and potentially reduce some costs. As example, it's anticipated these systems will not replace current aerial services, but may be able to accomplish about 30% of current search and aerial operations at about 2% of the cost. This would still leave 70% of the operations conducted by conventional means, but may show significant savings in the future while helping save lives. Several public agencies have given their support of the conceptual program, and we've given presentations in front of almost every city council in the Coachella Valley. We now have begun reaching out to the rest of the cities in Riverside County, and this is number 18 of the 28 cities, showing how the concept focuses upon four specific areas: search and rescue, disaster preparedness, public agency emergencies, and the education of the governmental officials, the public, and other stakeholders regarding the 2015 integration of unmanned aerial systems into the national airspace. If you're unaware, federal law was passed in 2012 requiring the FAA to not only allow public agencies to immediately begin using unmanned systems, but also to prepare a plan by September of 2015 to integrate unmanned aerial systems commercially into the airspace. State and local officials have already begun looking at laws and ordinances to restrict this, and we feel an educational process ahead of time will be very beneficial to those making decisions in the future. Therefore, we respectfully request the opportunity to offer our presentation at a future meeting. We believe our expertise will help you increase your understanding of these systems, so you can weigh in not only in this concept and possible future local ordinances, but also on the future commercial integration of unmanned aerial systems within Riverside County. And I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clark.
I'm going to complain about something. City council, staff, it's not a big issue, well, I think it probably is. The, the road improvements that have been going on and that are scheduled to really now begin to impact us. I've been checking out the city website in order to be updated as to schedules, details, plans, where things are going, what dates are important, and I see a kind of a dearth of information there. I'd like to suggest, because there are many, many people that really don't have a clue as to what's going on, that maybe that part of the website could be enhanced, so that we don't have to rely strictly on Menifee 24/7 for 24-hour notice that something is going to occur. Okay? That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of council. Mr. Mueller, you'll be happy to know that that's coming very soon. We're doing a website refresh, and what you currently see on the website is actually a static site. We can't make any changes on it until the update is coming, and I believe that is, what drop date is that? July, October 1? Mid-October, October 15th or so. However, we can continue to push out information through our website notification system and Menifee Matters, our e-newsletter, Twitter, and Facebook. So that's what we currently have on tap around August, excuse me, October 15th or so. The new website will be up, and the new Public Works Engineering information will be on there.
Good enough. Thank you, sir. Okay, further public comments?
And the next public commenter is going to be calling up Chief Rodriguez, who is here to introduce someone to you.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, staff. That time of the year again for MDA, so I'd like to introduce Laura McNeary. I believe you've met her before, but she has a quick update for you on upcoming events.
Thank you. Thank you so much for allowing me to come tonight. I just want to give a really quick update on our current program and what we're currently funding and some upcoming events in the area as well. But the International Association of Firefighters' support for the Muscular Dystrophy Association began in 1954, when the organization committed by proclamation to support MDA until a founder's cure. And the organization's unwavering commitment to MDA has remained strong to this day. This year marks the 60th anniversary of when MDA and the IFF partnership began. The IFF raised $100,000 for MDA in 1955 and $1 million in 1970, and the firefighters continue to raise the bar in their fundraising efforts. In 2013, more than 100 firefighters, including yours in Menifee, participated in the Fill the Boot events across the coun, across the country, excuse me, and raised $26.2 million to date. Currently, I'm so sorry, they raised $26.2 million just in 2013. My apologies. But to date, the IFF has raised 50, $530 million for MDA. Since 2008, CalFire Local 2881 Riverside Unit has raised over $630,000 for the Riverside County Chapter of the Muscular Dystrophy Association, providing help and hope to those affected by muscle disease. Your local heroes in Battalion 13 have raised over $75,000 to help support research for MDA, to help us find a cure for ALS, Duchenne, and the other 43 neuromuscular diseases. And they have currently been the number-one standing battalion across Riverside County for this fundraiser. CalFire firefighters respond to beyond, beyond the call of duty for their community. Together with MDA and CalFire, we'll host their 7th Annual Fill the Boot fundraiser from MDA Friday, October 3rd, and Saturday, October 1st, at the intersection at Newport and Han from 10:00 to 2:00. I invite you all to attend. It's a great photo op, and it's good for your community. We would love to have your young committee come out and support that day, and we can give them some community hours if needed. But thank you so much for allowing me to come to speak tonight about this wonderful event. Thank you so much for being so supportive of our events since you guys started about eight years ago, and thank you for your commitment to help us provide help and hope to our families in Riverside County who suffer from a muscle disease. I also have a plaque highlighting your local heroes and what they've raised in 2013, so I don't know.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for your support for our city.
All right, Madam Clark. Further speakers?
No, sir. Those are all your speakers tonight.
All right. Is this the chance for the council members to say something?
It is, sir.
Exciting, salient, to the point, relevant. Councilman Denver.
Lots of things have happened since the last meeting. Tuesday on the 16th, I think we all went to see Councilwoman Melendez, Assemblywoman Melendez in her office, and we discussed...
This is... Sorry, Council, this is a brand-new phone. I don't know how to work it yet. It'll probably...
There is an off button.
And... I just hit it. I hope it works.
Anyway, we all, we got an education talking to her about California, what California could do for our city. We had a mixer the same day at the Mott Museum. That's a very interesting museum here in our town, and that was a chamber mixer. It was a good time. Public Safety Committee met on September 9th. We had a couple of three things that we discussed. We didn't have a full contingent of council people, so we didn't actually have an official meeting, just informational. We had a, maybe the most interesting thing, was an update from the animal control providers, and they brought us news that we, or information that was detailed that we really didn't know. We had a handout to, as you know, we have a problem with the homeless, shall we say, in Menifee, and we asked, the committee asked for something to give to the business owners so that when we got more serious about doing something with the homeless, then we would have something to hand them and say, here's where you can get help. Anyway, that's all coming back to us, and there's other things, too. I also had a meeting at WRCOG, and we discussed the water issue. You should be pleased that EMWD and Western Municipal Water District has been working very hard in this area to, they actually did something that I thought was fascinating. They have taken the general plans from all the cities and all the county, the whole county, the whole area, and they imagined it completely built out, with every single home, every single commercial property, everything on it, and they have a plan to make sure that they have enough water for each and every one of those homes and businesses. And it has to do with, with, has to do with lakes, and has to do with recycling, and it has to do with desalting water. It was fascinating. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Denver. By the way, just a comment, just in case this thing goes off again. I got it last night from Verizon, and on my other one, you slide to the off. I don't know how to turn this thing off, so it was too expensive.
Is there any seven-year-old children in the audience that can show?
Yeah, five-year-olds could probably do it. Madam Clark.
Your Honor, I overlooked the speaker very accidentally, and I'm very sorry. Just when you are ready for me, would like to be able to call her up at this time or when you're ready.
Let's do that.
Katie Manier.
You had to have known I was sitting here for some reason. Not that I didn't have other things I could have done tonight. I'm going to say to Mr. Ruder, first of all, I don't think there's any apology when true information is put out for people to know how to vote and who to vote for, and there's enough mudslinging going on from other people. Anyway, that's one comment. Why is there no true information about the courthouse that's coming in here? I know Mayor Mann supports it and says it will be a family court. I personally don't believe that's true. It's replacing the hemet court. The hemet court is not just a family court. There will be nine divisions in this court. The court's a reason for Newport improvements and the need for better transportation, so the felons have a way into our city. Once they get in our city, they're going to be at the new courthouse, which is right next door to a kid's splash park, right next door to sports fields, right next door to Santa Rosa Academy. Isn't that really convenient? Let's have one-stop shopping for all these people. There are plans for 200 to 270 units of approximately 500 square feet behind this court. What kind of person lives in a 500-square-foot place, I'd like to know? And, Mr. Johnson, do you know there's no revenue generated by this courthouse? You seem to be the man that's worried about revenue. On another note with revenue, we have 43 employees, and the city's growing. Eight of them live in the city. Where do people spend their money when they get their paychecks? Do they spend them in the city they work in? I think not. They spend them in the city they live in. Going to movies, going to concerts, going out to dinner, doing all those things, all their shopping, and here we are in Menifee scraping for revenue you're concerned about. Then I want to know, why are we having people with no vested interest in this city giving so much input? We have Sue Christensen running for an office. She's a renter. We have Michael Mudd giving input, speaking for a candidate that's running at a forum. He is a renter. We have Roxanne Thompson, working closely behind closed doors with city staff. She's also a renter. And our own mayor does not have a vested interest in this city. He doesn't pay property taxes like the rest of us hard-working people. He doesn't have any vested interest in this city. Then I want to address Menifee 24/7. Yes, we have a paper in this area. We have a paper that is so biased, it's unbelievable. You can't get, I can't personally get a comment on there, even if it's something good. My name is blackballed on Menifee 24/7, and nothing I say will get printed. Now, I don't know how that's good reporting. All their reporting is biased. It's all swayed one way. I think we need freedom of speech. We need a decent paper in this town. We need a real newspaper, one that's unbiased, that prints both sides, prints the facts, and prints the truth.
Thank you. Any further speakers?
No, and thank you for allowing me that.
Okay, Madam Clark. Councilman Furman. We are under Councilmember Updates and Comments.
I'm just going to comment a little bit on what Mr. Ruder said, and it is, it is tough for every one of these candidates to run a campaign. It, it drains their body, it drains their pocketbook. And when there are comments made by people who put a synonym out and make a comment that isn't true, that hurts. And there's people that don't research, don't do their homework, okay? It would be lovely if, if the truth was printed on everybody and everything, but there are people that use mud, okay? And it happens, okay? So I just caution everyone, use your discretion, read as much as you can, okay? Research your candidates, and vote how you feel. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Furman.
You always forget me.
I'm looking for your button. Councilman August.
Yeah, I just, I want to, I was at the candidate forum today, and I thought everybody did a really wonderful job. And I keep, I keep hearing this from some people that, it's coming out from the water, water companies, the Metro, the Eastern Municipal Water District, and we are scheduled for a forum down the road. But I keep hearing all this great information that we're going to have water forever, and I just wanted to ask Mr. Denver in a nice way, did they tell you when we're going to be able to come off of 20% mandatory conservation? And also, my next question is, if you look at the state report, they're considering per capita water usage in Southern California. It doesn't sound like they have a real, clear handle positive over the water situation.
May I answer?
Sure. Mr. Denver, Councilman Denver.
I, I am not an expert on water, and so, so I do not claim to have all the answers or, or many of the answers. I do also look forward to the event that you just spoke to. However, the, the answer is, is that they have done, as I said, a study having to do with all the homes, all the properties that ever could be built as cities have allowed and counties have allowed. And these are the emergency measures so that there is backup plans and backup plans and backup plans for everything. There is a point, of course, when, when they have no water, but they have, they've done an amazing, and, and the comparison was, was to Northern California. Northern California has wells and has certain rivers that they use, and when those, when we, they have a drought up there, they don't have any water. And this is the desert, they say, and so they, they were showing us all the ways that they've compensated. I don't think they would ever say that there is no time under no conditions ever that we wouldn't have real problems. And all the things that you mentioned are the mechanisms to slow us... And all the things that you mentioned are the mechanisms to slow us from using the water so that we continue to have it. But I also look forward to that day when we have that session with them.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselman Furman, did you have an additional comment?
Yeah, I'm going to just make an additional comment on, on a comment that was made by one official. And that comment was, the question was, why, why don't, why are the farmers being beat down on their water? And the comment was, it's our job to bring water to the residents. It's not our job to supply water to the farmers. Expect them to drill their own wells, I guess.
Thank you, Counselman Furman. I'll just piggyback on a couple of comments people have said, starting off with Mr. Ruder's concern about the negative campaigning, and I think all of America is concerned about. I don't think there's anybody in this room that isn't concerned about inappropriate negative campaigning. And I just point out that back as early as 2006, if you're talking about presidential campaigns and congressional campaigns, you had something referred to as dark money. Dark money simply means that it's in a 501(c)(4)(5)(6) where you cannot have transparency and you don't know who's giving that money. Those are generally negative ads because they beat up on the other candidate, and you don't know who that other party is. So that was about $5.5 million in 2006. This year, it will have grown from $5 million to about $1 billion. $1 billion in this year nationally in dark money. And that means that out of that $1 billion, you will have no transparency, and it will all be negative. So that filters down to the local level, and so you can appreciate why people are getting upset. And like Mr. Denver on the water issue, I am no expert, but I was driving to the airport the other day, and I noticed going up and coming back, seeing several signs reminding us, we are in a drought. We, we are having a water shortage. And when you put on national news, you read about the southwestern part of the United States. When you put on international news, they refer to Southwest and specifically to California. When you look at the comments from the Chair of the Metropolitan Water District, he will comment not only about not knowing how long the drought will last, but without getting into what causes climate change, we don't want to get into that argument. All, all we know is there's 100% agreement that we are in climate change. That, that's accepted 100% by the scientific community. And there is an assumption that it is going to get worse. And I'm looking at what the state is just wanting to relegate, and that's five-minute showers. How much, how, how much you can, they're, they're suggesting that you tear up your grass. They're suggesting that you take out some of your foliage. I mean, what are we going to end up, living in an asphalt jungle? Then you have to ask yourself, if you add another 10 apartments, would that be a higher usage of water? And so it just seems to some of us, there's a disconnect. So I think we're, we're all in agreement. We're looking forward to what really Counselman August started. He really started this ball-rolling about, let's take another look at water. So the council's going to look at that, and I'm going to want to, and I'm sure Counselman August and probably Counselman Denver, we're going to want some expertise outside of the Eastern Municipal Water District. Because there seems to be a conflict of interest with the Eastern Municipal Water District. When you have directors on the board of the Eastern Municipal Water District who are consultants to developers and are getting personal financial gain, and then they in turn are suggesting to you that there's no shortage of water. It doesn't mean they're wrong. It simply means it's, one needs as a public to take a second look at it. Well, those are my comments. Madam Clerk, what is the next agenda item?
All right, sir, we're at the point on the agenda where you're in public hearings. The first motion I would ask for is on item 11.1, the public hearing for the Womble Chains of Zone, if that is your desire. This would be, yes, we approve the consent calendar. This would be a change of zone to a change of zone. There's nothing wrong with me. A change of the public hearing to a date certain for October 1st.
All right, we have a motion, and it's second. Do you need a roll call?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry. Did you have something for me, Director?
I think we jumped on item.
No, we didn't. I just want to make sure that it's, they opened the public hearing and continued it.
I did not plan that. I planned the entire item to be, is that what you, I'm sorry, Counselor, what's your recommendation here?
My recommendation is that you open the public hearing, and that way you can continue the opened public hearing to a date certain.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Leclerc. Thank you. Very much, Mr. Melching. Okay, so, Mr. Deputy Mayor, would you like to note that the public hearing is now opened, and we are continuing to a date certain?
That's okay with me. If you're, if you are on item 10.5.
11.1, public hearing.
Okay, public hearing of the Womble, oh, okay, okay. But you're, all you're looking for is a motion to continue.
Procedure way to get a motion to.
Can we have a motion to continue? All right. This public hearing in reference to item 11.1 is opened at 5 minutes of 8, and.
And I understand I have a motion by Mr. Furman, seconded by Mr. August, correct? Is that right? Okay. And that is for continuance. I, I asked earlier if they wished to speak, that it would be during public comments, so there's no forms, nothing's turned in.
Okay. So then I think you need a roll call on that one.
I do, sir. I do. So Councilmember August, Councilmember Furman. Councilmember Denver, and Deputy Mayor Edgerton. Thank you.
And there are no other comments from staff, and obviously we have no need for public comment. All right, then we will close the public hearing at 4 minutes of 8. So we'll go on to then item 11.2, is that?
Yes, sir, exactly the same procedure, and this is just about procedures, so if you'll open that.
All right, so we'll open the public hearing at 3 minutes of 8. Madam Clerk, and I'm assuming that we've posted this publicly, we have public notice.
Yes, sir, and that is why we're asking for a motion to continue to a date certain, so it does not require.
You have no written request for speakers whatsoever? Okay, then we have a request for continuance. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please. Pardon?
We do have a letter on the.
Right, and it will come back certainly with your public hearing, absolutely. Excuse me. Councilmember Furman. Councilmember August. Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Hi.
All right, and so at 2 minutes of 8, the public hearing is closed.
We're remaining open to continue.
All right, we'll leave it open for continuance. Okay, now are we on 11.3?
Yes, Your Honor, and at this point then, you can ask me if there's been any further correspondence. There is not, and so you can ask for a staff report on this, sir.
I'll do that. Sir, do we have a staff report?
Thank you, yes. Mr. Deputy Mayor, Members of Council, I'm going to hand it to Charles Leclerc, your interim planning director, community development director for the balance of the item.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. The item before you tonight is Development Code Number 2014-162 in regards to draft ordinance numbers 2014-155. The council may recall that this is something that was initiated by the City Attorney's Office a little bit more than a year ago in regards to repealing County Ordinance 847 dealing with noise standards and to adopt the city's code, that would be 9.09, noise control regulations within the city. The item was, as I mentioned, presented to you in May of 2013. There were a number of comments and changes that were suggested at that point in time. In addition to that, it was suggested that with your processing of the new general plan, that the material that was within the material then was inconsistent with that general plan. You continued the item in order to allow staff to address the changes, the City Attorney's Office to address the changes that had been suggested, and to deal with the issue of the general plan inconsistency. Between then and now, you have been, the city has received from the Attorney's Office changes to the code that would both address the comments that had been received by the City Council at that point in time and to address the inconsistencies. That language was presented to the Planning Commission in July of this year. The Planning Commission made some further suggestions that were additional language changes to the proposal. They confirmed their agreement with the language that had been changed per their direction. And at an August 12th public hearing, they recommended the planning, the City Council approve the code amendment that would repeal the county noise ordinance and establish a new chapter within our municipal code for noise control. In that resolution of the Planning Commission, they did suggest to you goals and policies consistent with the general plan. Those are listed on pages 12 and 13 of your staff report. Also, within the staff report, you have the draft ordinance, the Planning Commission's report of July 22nd and August 12th, so that you saw, can see what the Planning Commission saw. The Planning Commission's resolution, which is 14-174, and the county's ordinance, 847, simply for your reference. The Commission also recommends to you that since this is a textual change and since it's consistent with and implementing parts of the general plan's environmental impact report, that this ordinance amendment would be exempt from further environmental review. With that, as I said, the Planning Commission on August 12th unanimously recommended to you that you adopt an ordinance that would repeal County Ordinance 847 and install a new chapter, 9.09, dealing with noise regulations within the city. I'll attempt to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Leclerc. Are there any comments, any questions from the council? Do we have, you were looking for a motion of approval, are you for this?
Looking for public comments and then discussion amongst the council, and then hopefully a motion and an action.
And given no questions from council to staff, it would be appropriate to open the public hearing at this point.
We'll open the public hearing at 5 minutes after 8. Madam Clerk, this has been duly publicized.
Yes, Your Honor, it has, and I have no further correspondence.
All right. Questions then, will, do we want to bring it back inside the rail?
I do not have anyone who has indicated an interest to speak to this item as public testimony tonight, so unless someone has recently decided that, then at that point, your council may certainly deliberate this matter.
So we'll bring it inside the rail. Any comments?
You want to close the public hearing at this point then, Your Honor?
All right.
Thank you, I'll note it.
Five minutes after 8. Comments from the council? I'm getting rusty, Mr. Melching. I've been out of here for a long time. No, no comments from the council, all right? Do we have a?
Move to approve.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Madam Clerk, what is your pleasure? We have a motion.
And I'll note that that is a motion to introduce Ordinance 20, pardon me, 2014-155, and that will be scheduled for a second reading and adoption on October 1st. That is your motion, correct?
All right, that is our motion.
All righty, and I'll take a vote now. Councilmember August. Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton. And Councilmember Furman. And thank you.
And now, Madam Clerk, you want us to do what?
Now we can move to item 12.1, which is the, it is not a public hearing, sir, but it is an ordinance considering retitling, replacing, and amending Chapter 11.26 regulating residences of sex offenders.
Oh, boy. Do we have a staff report on this?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, Members of Council, I can do a brief overview of the issues, and if I get into some trouble, Mr. Melching can step in and, and help. As you're aware, and I've been briefed prior, the current sex offender ordinance that we had was not enforceable. It was an issue with our Riverside County Sheriff's Department, and some of the stringent requirements that we had were above and beyond what the state law required. And we had gotten some, some concerns from outside our area and to be blunt, put on a watch list for, for those issues and areas that were too stringent and non-enforceable. We met with Captain Judge, our, our police chief, and he, with the city attorney, recommended that we retitle and move to what the county ordinance was so that we'd be in line with everyone around us. This does that, and that is really the extent of, of the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Well, I do know that the council approved 50, the recommendation of, of the captain and, and of the city attorney, although some had great reluctance because for some of us, we'd like to make our, our ordinance is far more severe than they are now. But, Mr. Melching, it's my understanding that this is really still a matter of something going through the courts, and there may be a final decision later on, which either further closes our options or opens them up.
Yeah, just a little bit of brief background on this. There are two cases that have dealt with sex offender rules and regulations in the last few months. One of them is final, and that's the case, it was called People versus Nguyen. It was decided by the Court of Appeal in Orange County. The California Supreme Court had an opportunity to review that case, but it chose not to. And that case essentially said that local ordinances that try and impose restrictions that are more restrictive than are in Jessica's Law, which is state law, which is, it, your staff report indicates a panoply of restrictions that are a part of state law. But for those local agencies that wanted to go further, the court said, that area is preempted. Jessica's Law was an effort by the state to occupy that field entirely, and local agencies can't go further. But there is a second decision, a second decision that came out of San Diego County that had to do with residency restrictions, the sort of the, the radius around, the radius within which sex offenders may live. And that court found that the residency restrictions that appear in Jessica's Law were unconstitutional. But that Court of Appeal decision has been appealed to the California Supreme Court. So taking advantage of that, what the ordinance did here, as the city manager explained appropriately, was it, it really replaced the ordinance that you had with the ordinance that is in Riverside, that is applicable in Riverside County, which creates a uniformative enforcement between the city and the county ordinance. But in doing so, it also capitalized on some opportunities to in fact strengthen your ordinance with respect to the definition of, of what types of residential facilities sex offenders may live in. So I don't want that, that fact to be lost on you. Of course, the state had said that there are certain types of regulations that had to go by the wayside, and that's a final decision. But the state also allows in other areas for you to define the circumstances under which sex offenders may live in terms of whether they may be in the same residential facility together. And you have taken that opportunity, as did the county of Riverside, to provide more specificity and in fact enhance requirements above what state law requires in that area. So that was a longer explanation than I think you probably bargained for, but I wanted to make sure I put it out there for you.
Well, and, and just to complicate it more, is there any possibility that, that there would be a writ of certiorari in reference to the Supreme Court, even if it goes there?
I appreciate you giving me that opportunity. Unlikely that the United States Supreme Court would see fit to address this area of California law. So once the California Supreme Court said no to the People versus Nguyen case, that's probably the end of it in the courts. But that is not to say that the California legislature might not, for whatever reasons it may have, try and open up a forum for more local authority. And I say that because there is one statute in California law right now that's part of Jessica's Law that has a specific provision that, that says local agencies may adopt restrictions that are more punitive than those that are specified in state law, in this one area having to do with the. having to do with the circumstances under which sex offenders may live together. So there's an indication from the California legislature, at least in one context, that there is a recognition of a need for more local control. So it's not over, but right now, you are doing the right thing vis a vis your ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from the council? And what is the motion that you, we were going to?
The motion we would ask you for tonight would be to introduce Ordinance 2014-159 and schedule it for a second reading and adoption on October 1st.
Do we have a motion?
To approve.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. And I would want a roll call on this.
This will require a roll call vote. Thank you, Your Honor. Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, and now we come to the city attorney's report.
I'll venture a guess to say that I've spoken enough tonight.
Thank you, sir. That's what we like, succinct city attorneys. And now we go on to the city manager's succinct report.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of council. Robert Lennox has your community services update for you tonight.
I will also be succinct and try to keep it very short, just give you an update on what's the latest and greatest in community services. Typical review of three areas are committees and commission, capital improvements, and our operator service agreement. Important dates, though, to remember, October 4th is the City of Menifee Birthday Bash over at the college, so mark your calendars. We certainly will remind you again as we get closer to the date. The 18th in October, the city is partnering with Riverside County for a cleanup day in Romaland, and again, more details will be coming as we get closer. And of course, Halloween's right around the corner. At Lazy Creek Recreation Center, there will be an event put on with the rec staff there. And beginning of November, K-Sanisero staff will be putting on in partnership with another organization, Health Fair, for the benefit of the seniors in the community. On committees and commissions, the Park, Rec, and Trails Commission is going to be meeting tomorrow at 6 o'clock here. Latest topics of discussion include trailheads, as well as park development sites for expansion of the system that we currently have. Senior Advisory Committee is gonna meet next on the 30th of September. Hot topics being discussed right now includes senior transportation and also consideration of a caregiver ordinance within the city. And then, as you all saw this evening, Youth Advisory Committee, with its appointment, will be having its first meeting, as we just discussed, outside with the group, on the fourth Monday of each month. The only exception to that is going to be the Monday in September, which will be the 30th, it just happens to be the fifth Monday, and the regular meeting time will be 4:00 PM here at City Hall. The first meeting will mostly be about elections, brown act training, and just agenda planning for the rest of the year. Some of the capital improvement projects, not a whole lot new, just some completions of projects that I did present to the council before. Those include planner improvements at Lyle Marsh, as well as E.L. Peterson. We are still waiting for benches and trash receptacles for the Audi Murphy Ranch Sports Park, and we'll be moving on to other parks after we've outfitted that one. We did get completion today of the K-Sanisero's HVAC replacement over the west end of that building. It was an old unit that pretty much gave out on us, so we're happy that's in, and then have also got a schedule for the start of the Cherry Hills median landscaping project. And on the horizon is a playground resurfacing, which is a match grant through a recycle program. So some of the images, as I mentioned, Lyle Marsh, the planner was basically barren in areas that did have some growth. It was a mix of weeds, improperly irrigated, and so we did change the irrigation there to a point-to-point drip, put in a two-rail wood grain vinyl fence around the planners to protect them from pedestrian traffic, and some DG pass with drought-tolerant planting. It may not look like much now, but there will be ground cover, and when these plants become more mature, they will fill the space a little better. Additionally, over at E.L. Peterson, the same retrofit is taking place. You can see posts are being put in right now, and in about two weeks, we should have this project completed as well. And as I mentioned, K-Sanisero's HVAC replacement, this is a fairly easy repair, however costly. We would intend that this unit would probably outlive the center, as the prior one was the original unit that the building was constructed with. And then lastly, a quick overview of our operator service agreement with Valleywide Recreation and Parks District. A few issues that we are running into with Valleywide that I think the council should be aware of, relative to classes and facilities, Valleywide is responsible through a registration system of keeping account of all of those enrolled in their courses and classes. Right now, that system is not fully operational, making it a little bit difficult to reconcile deposits. Facility rentals also are not being fully implemented in that same system, which makes it a little difficult to see what, who, and what is in the facilities at any given time. Field allocations for sports groups are still pending. There's been a number of user groups that have submitted applications but have not received permitting for field use yet. And then lastly, the revenue deposits currently aren't reflecting necessarily the gross receipts as it spelled out in the contract. So we've been on top of Valleywide to ensure that we receive the gross receipts, and any payments that go toward instructors or other expenses are then the responsibility of Valleywide to take care of. Additional work is, as it was approved at the last city council meeting, the month of September has seen about $3,500 in additional work to date. That's a very modest start, as we intend, or we expect there will be a lot more expenses relative to the additional work moving forward. On that subject, though, staff is gonna be reviewing the pre-existing conditions exhibit that was part of the original contract, which essentially spells out what deferred maintenance exists in those parks right now. And although, the estimated improvements for all of the deferred maintenance or renovation needs in the existing city park spaces is estimated at about $568,047, and that was a estimate provided by Valleywide in a repairs and renovation probable cost report they provided to the city early on. So we wouldn't intend to tackle all of those, because some of them are certainly capital items, but several of them are definitely deferred maintenance and some routine maintenance items that we intend to tackle with the additional work contracts. So that concludes my update.
Councilman Furman, were you?
Yes, yes, sir. I was gonna make a comment. D, although the cleanup is in Romaland, I believe everyone in Menifee is invited to participate. Is that correct, just like our other ones?
That's correct.
Right, okay, so everyone in Menifee can participate, you just have to haul the stuff to Romaland. Okay.
Just a clarification, Mr. Lennox, when something is a pre-existing condition, is that an expense of the city or an expense of Valleywide?
Well, the term actually came from Valleywide at their request to ensure that it was part of record that the parks that they were taking on maintenance for had these existing conditions, but the cost to repair them, it falls on the city. The additional work contract was a mechanism to achieve that through Valleywide as the maintenance vehicle for it.
Well, the reason I ask is pretty obvious, is all of us are familiar with, say, homeowner's insurance, and the first question, if it's a pre-existing condition, it falls on the homeowner. The analogy would be, if it's pre-existing, it falls on the city, and otherwise, it falls on Valleywide. And maybe I misunderstood you, but I thought you said that you're gonna contend that pre-existing conditions fall on Valleywide and not the city, or did I misunderstand?
Yeah, maybe, there may be a little misunderstanding. It falls on them to complete the work at our authorization, so it is a city responsibility because it's city property. We are simply telling Valleywide, due to the additional work contract, you now have the authority to take care of these things with our approval.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, do you have any further?
I do not, thank you.
And any further comments from the council? I would advise everyone that this, we're getting out early tonight. I would suggest that's because of leadership. Complainers, complainers will maintain it's because of a shorter agenda, but what do they know? This meeting is adjourned.